...forth to order. Welcome, everybody. Well, we're missing a media, but we will have public audience at this point in time. And seeing none, I will move on to Board Administrative Communications. I'd like to start this off, and we're doing something a little backwards, but I'd like to welcome our new member, Sharon Thomas, who was sworn in today as our new Board of Education member. She is, works for Etna. She has been very involved in our, in our board meetings since the beginning of the year. She's taken a very great interest in the students of Simsbury, all ages, all, all schools. And she is very involved in our Spirit Council and has worked on our diversity work since we've, since the spring, since March or April. She also, I feel, is carrying on her mother's greatest wishes by looking out for children as her mother was a lifelong teacher.
Thanks.
And we are so happy to have her.
Welcome.
Now, we can move on to administrations. Caleb, do you have much to share?
Um, I've got a little bit. So, um, in Latimer, they had their annual walk and bike to school day on the 17th, and on the 22nd, they'll, uh, they had their run back to school 5K day. Latimer will be hosting their first Latimer Lane Family Picnic on Thursday, October 3rd, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM on the Blacktop and Playground. And there'll be music, a scavenger hunt, time for visiting, and they're working on securing a food vendor. At Tooten Hills, they held their first all-aboard family meeting. Family meetings are designated times where teachers and small groups of students mix through all K, uh, K through 6 grades, meeting and participating in activities that help develop a stronger sense of respect, personal responsibility, and caring for each other. Um, let's see. At Terrifield, they had a welcome-back meeting, or picnic, on the first week of September, and it was well-attended as they had food and music in the front of the school. At Simsbury High School, the freshmen attended an assembly called Go Viral. The program emphasizes the message of kindness, citizenship, positive thinking, issue, issues with social media, and making authentic connections with others. The 11th and 12th grades, uh, graders have their open house on Thursday, and the Simsbury High School, um, had their, Simsbury High School had their first football game of the season against MD and won. Um, in addition, the Simsbury Public Schools will again be participating in the Start with Hello campaign this week. And Start with Hello is, um, it was created by the Sandy Hook Promise and raises awareness about social isolation and educates students and the community on how to prevent it through, uh, just saying hello first.
Thank you very much. Excellent report. Um, Sharon, do you want to share anything?
No, just, I'm glad to be here. It's my first meet, I've changed seats, so I'm glad to be here.
Right.
Uh, nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Nope.
Mrs. Higginson?
All set.
Uh, just a quick thank you to the board members who serve on our personnel and negotiations committee. We have started up negotiations with both our teachers and administrators, so a few night meetings in the last week or so, many more to come in the next month as we negotiate with those two really important groups. And one other announcement, that next Tuesday, October 1st, will be the first meeting this year of the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force, looking at some of the work that we've been in partnership with TechCon. And so, we're excited to get that started for 2019-20.
Thank you.
Just an update on last week's Professional Development Day, Early Release Teachers, Day for Teachers. Here was a time for them to create their professional growth plans that was aligned to our new five-year Board of Ed goals, aligned to the district strategic plan, the school focus areas, and so I can confidently say, we're definitely on the way of launching our new strategic plan. So, it was really well orchestrated, and teachers very much engaged.
Great. Good to hear. Excellent. Mr. Curtis?
Yes. I wanted to provide a equity update. We had our kickoff meeting, our first meeting of the Equity Council, last Thursday, I believe it was, and several people were here, so I might point to you in a second, but I thought it was a very engaging environment, to say the least. We had about 25 stakeholders there. We had students, we had parents, we had staff involved. And I put in your folders, the one pager that kind of defines the work of the Equity Council, as you'll remember, we've talked about it before in, in updates to the Board, that we're working in collaboration with the Center for School Change. Sue worked very closely with them in, in planning the opening activity. But you've heard Erin just talk about launching a new strategic plan. When I opened up this meeting, Equity Council, I talked about the time being right for this conversation in our district because of the launch of the new Continuous Improvement Strategic Plan. And that for this work to really take root, it's got to be embedded in the goals that we've identified. And as you know, when we went through that process last year, we've denoted many areas that dovetail very nicely with the equity work. This Equity Council will kind of lead that charge in providing USPAC recommendations after a review of data, after professional readings, after some really good conversation about different directions we can go. We did some really cool stuff. I mean, we did some word sorts, right, around building common language around equity. I don't know if you guys want to add anything? I thought it was
Yeah.
It was two and a half hours, but I mean, it, it flew, and it was really engaging. It was an exciting environment.
Yeah, it, it really did go by fast, and I think the word challenge was really good. Um, it was a great exercise for us to, um, at least understand what the words mean, and then, we've all had different definitions for the word. So, it provided a good icebreaker, if you will?
Yeah, that's correct.
For us all.
So, one, one piece that's going to be important for our administrative team, our administrative council, which is about 20 people or so, is we're going to take the learning of the Equity Council, some of these activities, and we're going to replicate them with our own administrative council to kind of increase our capacity and our professional learning with things, so.
Sounds great.
All right.
Um, moving on, we can go on to the approval of the minutes of September 10th meeting. So moved.
I got a question, or clarification?
Clarification?
Uh, just, when I was speaking about the Sustainability Committee, we haven't been granted the silver level yet, we just, we've applied for the silver level. I'd love it if we got the silver, I mean, if you could just check that off now, that'd be great.
I'm, I'm really impressed that you read your minutes. Thank you very much. Um, with that correction, anyone else have anything? I would go for a motion. There's a motion on the table, second? All those favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. The next business, piece of business, is the acceptance of the resignation of Tom Frank. Tom Frank has moved to Avon, so he can no longer be on the Board of Education. He resigned as of September 11th, and we want to thank him for all of his hard work and his dedication and passion for our district and our students. And we, just to let you know, he's not too, too far, though, because he's still north of 44. So, he's still basically in the neighborhood, but I just want to say thank you very much to him. I would accept a motion for his resignation.
Move to accept the resignation of Tom Frank from the Board of Education.
Second?
Second.
Anyone have anything they'd like to share, say?
It's been great serving with him. He brought some really good questions and had a really unique perspective, so that will be missed. But I'm so, I'm sure Sharon's going to give us a good one too.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And so, we will say that, um, we did that a little backwards, but he did resign as of September 11th. So, Sharon was appointed by the Democratic Town Committee, then she went in front of the Board of Selectmen last night to be fully appointed, and she went to the town clerk today to be sworn in. So, we moved very quickly on that, and we're all very happy.
Right.
No empty seats here. Um, moving on to informational education report.
So, we're going to do an overview today of some programming from the Department of Continuing Education, which is, been one of my great joys in this role, to assist with the work of DCE, as we call it. And what we're going to be, if we talked about all the programming for DCE, we'd be here all night, because one of the things we want to emphasize is how diverse their programming is. But we've chosen three areas tonight to have some of our, uh, members of the department talk to you about, and really show you the, the depth and breadth of the programming that we have in continuing education in Simsbury, literally from our very youngest members of society to those who are in advanced adulthood, and maybe need to brush up some technology skills and sign up for a class that they, um, so, we do have colloquialism in the department that the mission covers womb to tomb. So, and you'll hear, we're going to go backwards today.
Don't make out.
We're going to talk a little bit about adult education first, do some of our youth programming with one of the major highlights, and then talk about our preschool program and, and after-school care programs in addition. So, I want to start with this kind of overview of, of the department. You can see right at the center there, our Director, Dave Kroom. Dave assumed the leadership of DCE at the same time that Ronald Reagan was elected President of the United States in 1980, and has been serving for 39 years as the Director of the Department. What the, what the outreach that you can see in the, uh, if you look on the left-hand side, you can see some of our programming really focused on youth, and we'll hear later from Nikki Mahan and Kelly Curtis about both our Children's Academy preschool and the SEED program, and really what the, probably the largest portion of what goes through DCE. And in addition, you're going to be able to hear about the Simsbury Arts Academy, as Shannon Gagne has joined us tonight. On the right-hand side, you can see not only adult ed that's covered at the, at the top of the right-hand side, but there, in addition, there's a whole lot of youth programming that goes on, both in the school year overseen by Aaron McCarthy, and then in the summer by two of our teachers, Deb Schott and Katie Bristol. In addition to that, Lorraine Rye keeps the books and keeps everything running over at DCE, which if you don't know, is located sort of in the music wing of Henry James, and, and has got a strong presence in the Henry James facility. So, I'm going to have Dave come to the table here, along with Mike Angelillo, who is one of our adult ed teachers. Some of you may remember, a couple of years ago, I reported out to the Board that Mike was actually selected as Connecticut's Adult Educator of the Year a few years ago, and Dave's going to walk you through some of the adult program, and then Mike will probably share a couple of stories about his work over many years, so.
One of the things I'm proud about is that in our program, and I want to talk for a few seconds about the summer program, because that's really what got us started in 1980. We do hire high school and college students who work with kids in our summer program. And I'm pleased to say, we counted up today, 33 of those students who, and employees who worked with us from the 80s on, got so inspired, they now are in the field of education. Some of them are working right here in Simsbury. And four that worked for us this past summer have decided to go into education. One of them is at now doing his student teaching at Central School this fall. So, hopefully, we're helping to create some additional good future employees for the town and for the state of Connecticut. But I'd like to talk to you a little bit about our adult program. We offer courses, and they can vary from year to year. Depends on the interest of, of the community. In financial and legal assistance, that's a big one. Home and gardening, especially in the, the summer, the, the spring months. Lot of cooking classes, recreation and hobbies. Yoga is one of the courses that's been with us. I think we were probably about the first group ever to provide a yoga program in the town, and now we have private organizations in, in the town as well. And a lot of personal enrichment types of courses. But the one I want to emphasize for a few minutes is, as you see up, up above, is Ed to Go. It's an online services program that we provide to the community. And in addition to, uh, adults taking these courses, we have some of our teachers taking them too. They provide, in addition to, uh, programs in languages, computers, healthcare, and medical, uh, they provide career training opportunities for teachers. We have a number of students who have taken classes, are teachers who have taken classes in PowerPoint, how to use PowerPoint, and integrating technology in the classroom, as, as Neil had talked about, with some of the older teachers, especially who want to learn more with us. But we pretty much offer anything that someone would, would like to, to teach for us. We, we get our ideas from the community. We actually go out and contact some of the businesses in the area, and they've provided services for us. The next slide is our state-mandated program, and we're going to have Mike talk about this in a few minutes. Paul Kulikowski has been our supervisor of the state-mandated program for about six years now, and I'm sorry, he can't be with us tonight. He was the one that thought there'd be a great idea to, to inform you about what this program does. The Board of Education is required by law to provide these services to the townspeople who have not received a high school diploma, to give them the opportunity for it. Some people who have weak skills in certain areas, we offer the Adult Basic Education Program. We have a lot of people of foreign descent who want to learn the English language, and in a, a slide you'll see in a couple of seconds, you'll see a list of the various countries that are now involved in our ESOL program. The programs are offered three times a year. The fall, we have a 13-week semester. On Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays, we offer the classes. In the spring, the same thing. And during the summer, we offer a five-week summer ESOL program, so that the students who have enrolled during the school year can keep up with, uh, the activities of the program. These are the countries that currently are represented in our ESOL program, and really covers the map. So, with that in mind, I have to introduce to you a veteran teacher. Mike Angelillo has been with us longer than I've been with us. He's the only person on the staff that I have not hired over the years. And he is tremendous. He has a following. They know him over in Europe, and when the, a lot of our students are au pairs. They go back after a year or two. The new au pairs that are coming over to Simsbury, they always tell them, "You gotta take Mr. Mike." And with those introductions out of the way, "Mr. Mike, it's yours."
Hi. Good evening. Uh, I got a text about an hour ago from Peru, and I got a text because one of my students went back, she's going back there for good, but when she was here, she used to invite not only myself, but this other students to her home over in Butchy Hill Road, and she would, could really cook up a meal. And she wrote a, she's writing a book, a cookbook, and I praised her, and I wish I could write, read the words I said, because I was surprised at what I said myself. And she was so impressed that she wrote back and said how she was in tears today, and I tried to get it for you, and I couldn't do it. So, anyway, I, I don't want, I want to be brief, but I just want to let you know that I did my homework. I got two folders here. I was in media at Weaver High for 37 and a half years, and with that background I had, I, I taught parallel night school in Hartford and at Simsbury. Two nights in Hartford, two nights in Simsbury. So, anyway, as a media person, I felt that even though I'm not going to take that much time, that when you have a chance, and you can peruse the material I, I have here. Now, the first, I feel like a salesman here. If you buy this, I'll guarantee you. But anyway, this here is the Citizenship Administration. I guarantee you, it's fantastic. The people I've had, I haven't had, never had, you know, it's really, I really want to brag, but I have to. In 45 years, no one has ever failed the test. And I have to tell you two stories about, one about three Italian women, and I'm Italian, so I can say this, and the other one's about a lady from Portugal and her niece. Let's go to the first one now. Just picture yourself, you can close your eyes and just picture this. I'm sitting in the, I'm standing in the classroom at Henry James School with a Bell &amp; Howell projector. So, I'll show you my age. I had a nice reel-to-reel film called, and I'll tell you what it's called, The National Citizenship Exam. And in the exam, you could see Maury Safer, I guess his name is, Mike Wallace and Harry Reisner. They were younger guys at the time, and they were still alive. Well, anyway, I proceeded, turned on the projector, and the film starts going. And you see Mike Wallace talking to Harry, "Well, what do you think about this? Oh, yes, I think about this. What do you think about this?" And it's going 100 miles an hour, their voice. The three Italian ladies who knew each other sat there, and just sat there, and sat there. And I kind of gazed after 10 minutes and said, "These people don't kibesh. Whatever's on the film, they don't understand anything." So, I stopped it, and I said, "Excuse me." I said, "Do you know what's going on in this film?" They look around at each other, and I'm not going to use their dialect, because my wife said I'd be fired from Simsbury tonight. But they said to each other, they looked at each other, "You understand what's going on?" "Hey, I, I don't know what's going on. You know what's going on?" "No." I said, "Oh, mamma mia," because I can say that. Uh, I said, "How am I going to get to these ladies?" And the lady said, "You know, Mr. Angelillo?" She said, "I don't think we belong here. We're old, we're over 65 years old, and we've been out of class for a long time, so it's best that we leave." And I said, "Well, just wait a minute now." So, I'm thinking about Hartford, and I grew up in Hartford, and I knew about Franklin Avenue where they get grinders. And I said, "There was, the Italian-American Club was on that street." So, I said, "Excuse me." I said, "Did any of you ever belong to the Italian-American Club?" And by the grace of God, they all belonged to it. And I said, "Let me see how I'm going to do this." So, in those days, we didn't have the whiteboard, whatever board you call it. We had blackboard. We had chalk. So, I draw, I put a line down the straight, the center, and I put the President of the United States and the President of the Italian-American Club. I said, "Now, do you know who the President of that Italian-American Club is?" And they say, "Of course, say, you know, Giuseppe Cardone." Say, "I can't remember the name." I said, "Great." So, I wrote ju, "How do you spell it?" I said, and I spelled it. Then I looked to the left side, and I put President George Bush Senior. And gradually, over the time, they, they were able to figure out what I was saying. So, anyway, we, we did the, we took the, this is the application, by the way, it's in here for you to look at when you have a chance. We filled out the application, we did all that work, then I didn't see them any longer. And time went on, I'd say about a month, two months, and, no, it was more than that. Maybe six months. And I kind of gave up and said, "Ah, I guess I failed on that." So, one day, I was at the Stop &amp; Shop in Simsbury, and I saw two of the ladies pushing the carts, and they saw me. And honest to God, "Mr. Mike!" And they bursted out, "We passed!" And I said, "You passed. How about the other one?" "We all passed." So, that's part one. Okay, we'll take a short intermission, and then go to the second one. The second one was where I had a Portuguese lady with her niece, and they called the niece in Portuguese Sabrina. And Sabrina came up to me and she said, "Sir," she said, "could you teach my aunt the nationalization test?" I said, "Well, what has she done before?" She said, "Sir, she took the exam." She didn't take the exam, but she went to the test in Hartford. I said, "How did she do?" "Well, she says it's kind of unique." I said, "What do you mean it's unique?" "Well, she knew all the questions." I said, "She knew all the questions? All of them?" She said, "She knew them all." "Well, so how did she fail?" "Well, she said when she walked in, the tester said, 'Please have a seat.'" He had a nice smile on his face, very warm and compassionate. He said, "Please have a seat." She looked at him. He says, "Please have a seat." She looked at him, smiled, and he said, "Wait a minute." He says, "Why didn't she sit down?" She says, "Sir, she doesn't understand English." Well, he said, "Wait a minute now. You say she knows all the, the questions for the exam, but she doesn't understand English." She says, "I taught her every question and answer." She says, "Ask her." So, he said, "Who's the first President of the United States?" Rattle it off. How many colors are the American flag? What's the color of the American flag? Red, white, and blue. He said, "Man," he said, "I'm dumbfounded. I never had something like this before." He says, "Ma'am," he says, "well, tell your aunt I can't pass, sir. She has to go and learn English." So, anyway, she came to my class. I didn't teach her before, it was another program. Every week, this is a window, that's a door. "How are you? How you doing? Please sit down. Please stand up. Please have a drink of water." I went through this for six weeks, and after six weeks, she went back for the test. Again, I didn't know how she did. So, about two months later, I went to the home, rang the doorbell, the husband answered and didn't know who I was. And I said, "Excuse me, is Maria at home?" "Maria? What do you want Maria for?" And I said, "Well, I'm a teacher." "Oh, Mr. Mike!" I said, "Yeah, come on in." So, I went in, and there's Maria. And the only thing she did was put her arms around me and said, "I passed." So, these are the two experiences there. One last thing, since I'm on a roll, and I'll be, I'll be fast. In the ESL program, I had a lady who was from China. She didn't speak a word, just barely a word of English when she came here. About two years later, she had a situation where she went to, and I'll tell you where it was, Home Depot, and she bought a freezer, a refrigerator, and a dishwasher. And she paid cash. They said it would be delivered in two weeks. Two weeks went by, no delivery. Three weeks went by, no delivery. A month went by, she went and demanded her money in English, and got it, went to Best Buy, and proud as she could be, she said, "I got my, my merchandise," she said, "with no problem." And you know what? I said it in English. And one thing I told them, "Whenever you get into a problem, don't get excited, because that's going to make you lose more English." So, I said, "Be cool, calm, and collected." And this is my story to you. These other things are for you to look at when you have a chance. It's about the pre-b beginner. I want to tell you something. I could be here all night, and I'm not going to be. But I, 45 years went just like this. And with a guy like this, Dave, and Paul Kulikowski, who's been through so much, surgery and all, God bless him, they made me the Teacher of the Year. And to be honest with you, it's a team effort. I didn't do it by myself. It took 45, or 43 years, but they finally remembered that guy in that room over in the corner there, teaching that, "What course is that?" And so, I thought I'd share that with you. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on that accomplishment.
That's Mike.
That's Mike with his students.
With his students.
Mike, do you know how many, how many students you have?
You know, I was thinking of that today, and I really can't tell, because I have, say, like, like what you see there, and sometimes with the citizenship, it could be one semester, it could be five. I got three right now. And I really don't know, but, you know, I, I really feel proud of myself right now, and I'll tell you why. Because when I was planning this, I hadn't slept a few nights. I'll be honest with you. I was told, "When you can't sleep," and this would be good for you to know, "eat a banana." So, 1:00 every morning, every, 1:00 PM, after I watched Johnny Carson and all that, I said to my wife, Maria, and she's from Peru, and she's a nurse, and she was in the school system of Hartford and all that jazz. I said, "Maria, I can't sleep. I can't sleep. I got to do this, I can't, I have to be awake. I can't do it." Mike, eat a banana. So, anyway, now I'm losing track of what I'm saying. But anyway, uh, it's been a beautiful 45 years. I don't know how many students. I would say maybe, maybe a thousand, give or take, in Hartford the same.
Good for you.
I have to interrupt for a moment. When he said Johnny Carson, in case you're not aware
Over there.
Still on television. There's a, a television station, and I told Mike about it, and ever since then, he's been watching him every night. It's called Antenna TV, and every night, they broadcast the old Johnny Carson shows at 10:00.
And we're going to be on TV in the next few weeks. We're going to be together, having our own program. So, after we leave the Simsbury school system, we can stay on for a while.
Just a couple more things about our state-mandated program. One of the, the requirements that we have is to help prepare students to pass a high school GED test. Uh, we are not an administrator of the test, but we can schedule We are not an administrator of the test, but we can schedule students for a GED test. And we've done that. We offer classes in English, math, science, and social studies for them during the school year. The other thing that I'm very proud of is that the State of Connecticut has given us the authorization to recommend to you veterans who have worked, who have served in World War II, the Korean Conflict or the Vietnamese Conflict, and who were not able to graduate high school because of their military service. And we have had a number of those veterans be issued high school degrees or diplomas through our Board of Education, and for that, I thank you all. The Daughters of the American Revolution have supported us tremendously. A couple of years ago, they gave us a finance, some financial support for the programs that we have been doing in citizenship in particular. And Mike and I were there accepting that award for the Board of Education. So with that in mind.
The other thing to give you an update on is that this is the Department of Continuing Ed's state-mandated program. The same way a high school goes through accreditation on a cycle, this program recently went through an audit report, and that's a picture of our famous art educator, Paul Kulikowski. He had to install it as an art, piece of art. But Paul was leading that process, which was, you know, the way that high school accreditation is quite challenging. Some of the recommendations that came out of that is to continue to look for ways in the community to recruit, to make sure that we're staying up to date with our GED test preparation. We don't have a lot of students who come through that program, but it's important to keep up to date with making sure that they can pass when they go to take it. Staying current on the citizenship requirements as those get changed at the national level, and just continuing to grow community connections with various community organizations to keep advertising what's available in adult ed so that people take it. So this presentation would be one of the efforts to kinda spread the word around what's happening in adult education. So thank you, Dave, thank you, Mike, for almost 100 years of service between you and me. And I'm gonna make a transition here to one of our programs that is a summer program in our Youth Services Division, which is, you know, as Dave talked about, Continuing Ed started with summer programming, and it was a lot at that point about credit recovery and that students had to go to summer school to make up credits that maybe they didn't, they didn't earn in high school. That's an old misnomer. We still do a little bit of that. We granted 167 credits worth of credit recovery this past summer. But by far, the much larger portion of what happens in the summer now was enrichment programming for our students in Simsbury. And probably the biggest impact of all that enrichment program comes through the Simsbury Arts Academy, which Cindy Rem spearheaded about, starting a little over a decade ago. It continues to grow under Shannon's leadership, and I wanted her to take a few minutes to highlight her program.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the time to share Simsbury Arts Academy program. Again, I'm Shannon Gagne, and I'm in my third year leading the program. And I do have to share that I taught the very first Simsbury Arts Academy class during the school year program, and I think it was in 2002. So now, getting the opportunity to lead the program and design experiences for kids that are both innovative and traditional media is something that I'm very passionate about. Up here, there's a few photographs of some of our very popular classes. And I, oh, wait, could you go back for one? Because I have a few things to share. The program is based at Simsbury High School. So students arrive, they're dropped off by their parents in the front of the school, and they're greeted by a very enthusiastic group of interns, mostly, actually all Simsbury High School graduates, recent grads and maybe early college students. So Kayla, I'll be checking in with you about what your summer plans are. She's a fashion student of mine. And so the students come back, and they work with the kids, and they work alongside the teachers in three different parts of the programming. We have a performing arts with strings and jazz academy, and we have musical theater. This year, we did The Little Mermaid Jr., where I have to share, I was invited to make my debut onstage with the younger 4th grade kids. I was so excited when Michael Hunter asked me, he invited me to be there in front of the whole staff on our opening day, and I was like, "Which mermaid do I get to be?" And he said, "No, Shannon, you're a sea creature." So that is me with the jellyfish umbrella in the back, which ended up being actually one of my most favorite experiences, because being a visual artist, I never had the opportunity to be on a stage. And backstage, the excitement and the energy of the actors is indescribable. And I looked at one of the kids that was leading me along through the choreography that was probably rather simple, but for me, it was a little challenging, said, "I never wanna get off of this stage, ever." And I was like, and you could see all the kids so excited. And so you see that passion begin right there. It's grades 4 through 12. Also, the students have the option to take visual arts classes. So up here, you can see, they did black light painted, they did 3D printing, they threw on the pottery wheel, we had a fashion show. The students did comic art and had a whole exhibition where they created their comics and then interacted with the public, and you could come and sign and greet and ask questions about their narratives. And it was interactive and engaging and just an overall fantastic summer. You just don't want it to end. It's like three weeks, and the kids are getting credit. And in the end, they, they're like, "Oh, I'm getting credit for this? I would've done it anyways." And so we're all about building relationships and inviting all kids to be a part of it. And I hope at some point in the summer, if anybody, the summer coming up, if anybody ever wants a walk-through, I would love to take you through. I'll bring you backstage and see, see the, behind the scenes. So this was at the end, it is a three-week program that's built on scope and sequence, so there's depth there. You can't, we don't really recommend just jumping in, because in the end, there's a culminating presenting experience where the students perform. And it's really, will blow you away that kids who have never had the opportunity to learn an instrument will be introduced and get up and perform in front of a group of people. And it will also blow you away to see what the performing arts staff pulls together in three weeks. The kids are, the show is choreographed, and all the kids have tried out, and they have their roles after the second day. And I'm thinking, "Oh, my gosh, like, how did you learn all this so fast?" So there's passion and commitment, and there's also a beautiful exhibition at the end of visual artwork that students are so proud to show and then take home their work with their families. So we had about 90 students enrolled this year, 16 faculty. Many of our teachers from Simsbury Public Schools, which is wonderful, mostly returning staff and already saying, like, "I have so many ideas for next year. I can't wait." So both teachers and students just committed and looking forward to adding to the program in the future. And I, being a teacher at Simsbury High School, I can be a true testament to say that I'm getting kids now in my 10th grade fashion class that I had when they were in 7th grade in my fashion class, and they build on the skills. They've, they remember their experiences, and they're better off for it. So, and their relationships are already there when I get to walk through elementary, middle, and high school, so.
Did it used to be longer? Did it used to be longer? Six weeks?
Not ever. It was always like the second.
Not under this umbrella of the Simsbury Arts Academy. I think that was not through Continuing Ed, that other program.
It was the Simsbury Arts and Music Center, and they sort of collapsed. They asked us to assume that the role.
Perfect.
Any questions for Shannon?
It's great. Thank you so much. It's a great program.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the time.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Our last portion to talk about is our very youngest students. And overseeing our Youth Services Division is Nikki Mahan. And in particular, she's gonna talk about our Children's Academy preschool.
So thank you also, as Shannon said, for letting us come tonight and kinda talk about what we're so passionate about and what we do every day. I've always believed a picture's worth 1,000 words. So I wanted to mainly show you just some of the pictures over the last few years. Some of those go back maybe five years or so. But we offer a huge program for kids ages 3 and 4, and we even have some 5-year-olds, those that maybe parents choose not to send to kindergarten and wanna kinda delay that a little bit. We've switched about six years ago to a multi-age classroom. So we have four classrooms of 3s, 4s, and 5s altogether. We switched to that model based on some research that shows how they can kind of learn from each other and benefit wholly. Some of our students are with us for a couple of years, typically with the same teacher. So that really allows to build that relationship as well. I'm gonna go to the next slide. So currently, right now, we have, it changes sometimes daily. I think I have a new one starting tomorrow, so that'll be 108 students. And 13 faculty, that doesn't include myself and Erin McCarthy, who works as a supervisor for me. But we have 107 students across four classrooms. We have 12 seats offered each year through open choice, and that's been a real, real treat to offer that. They've been a great addition to the classrooms. We have partial day, half day, full day. We kinda run the gamut.
Special orders don't upset us. You can go Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday.
Kinda like Burger King, we try to make it your way. Trying to meet, there's so many different needs in the community. Some parents just want that socialization opportunity for their kids a couple of days a week. Some parents, you know, need that, want that full-day school environment. Some parents need that 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And so we actually, a couple of years ago, started offering extended hours, both in the morning and in the afternoon, for the working families that needed a little bit longer of a day. We partner with Special Services Department. They have some of their students placed in our program as well with, we work closely as a team with both the special education teachers as well as the paraprofessionals that are placed in that classroom.
Nikki, are the special education students in the 107 number?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Yes, they are. Our curriculum is a nationally-based, play-based curriculum. It's called Creative Curriculum for Preschool. It focuses, the reason we chose that curriculum is that it focuses on the whole child, and it does a really great job. They've done some crosswalks with the State Department requirements, and it does a really nice job of streamlining from 3K to K. We do a lot of work, not just on the academics, the reading, the writing, all of that, but also the social skills, you know, how to be in a classroom, how to be a good student, how to be kind, all of those things that kind of are the foundation for learning going forward. That's pretty much.
So they're now fully based out of Squadron Line School. There used to be a split between Central School and Squadron Line. So when you get to the bottom of the ramp now and go left, it's the entire wing of that portion of Squadron Line School, right next to the kindergarten, which is the next wing. And so there's been a nice partnership developing between Nikki's preschool teachers and the kindergarten teachers at Squadron Line. It's been, it's, you know, really taken a nice.
We've done a lot of work with Betsy Gonzalez as well. She's been a great collaborator with us as far as professional development for our teachers and things like that as well, so.
When did the change happen to combine, like, the 3s, 4s, and 5s? My son actually had Mrs. McCarthy, I think, 11 years ago, at Central.
Yes, yep.
And he, we helped, he was young initially, it was December birthday, and we held him back. So he did the 3s and the 4s.
Right. Yep, so I wanna say it was eight years ago? I think we're in our eighth school year now. It was when we added the full-day option. That was when we kind of revamped things a little bit. We did a study and studied a lot of programs in the area to kinda try to make the best of everything, the Burger King way.
But just to be clear, your kids are not just Squadron Line district kids?
Correct.
From all over town?
Any elementary school.
I just wanna make sure people realize that.
Yes, thank you.
It used to only be Central, wasn't it, way in the beginning?
It started at Squadron.
Started at Squadron.
Started at Squadron. Sue and I, our kids both went there at Squadron.
And then it was Central in Tooton, then it was Central in Squadron, and now it's all Squadron.
Right. And if we had another room, we could run, I mean, there is a waitlist.
Of about 22 students. Wow.
Oh, of 22 students?
Yeah. So the other, the other portion of the division that Nikki oversees is our before and after-school program of SEED, but she has a very able right hand in Kelly Curtis, who's gonna talk a little bit about the after, before and after-school SEED program.
So I'm gonna start with that, actually, just about our enrollment right now. It's at an all-time high, 379 students. And then we have 83 in AM care, which is, we have an AM care program at Squadron Line because they start later. The others, and then all five schools have a PM care. But we have 83 students registered for our AM care program. They don't all come every day. And then we have about 26 staff overall. Some of those staff are high school staff. Some of those high school staff, I think we just did the count today. We've had eight, eight high school staff that were at one time students in our SEED program. So, and they've come back now to work for us. Many of you have or continue to have your students in our program. Kayla was actually a student in SEED as well at one point in time. So it's good to see her. It's almost like everybody. Thank you, I apologize on this, this is my voice. So I'm, for with that, I'm gonna turn it to Kelly to talk a little bit more about the details of the program.
All right. As Nikki mentioned, we run out all five elementary schools in town. We run from the dismissal time till 6:00 PM. We also follow that same schedule on early release days, from dismissal time to 6:00 PM. As she mentioned, we do run at Squadron Line from 7:00 AM to 8:30 when school starts. That's where our AM care program is. When school isn't in session due to holidays or professional development for the teachers, we run a full-day program over at Squadron Line from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We also run on snow days, providing it's safe enough for SEED to run. We'll run the same thing at Squadron Line from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. During program time, we have active play outside, we have homework help time. We follow an educationally-based curriculum that enhances problem-solving skills, thinking outside the box, and learning through play to promote that positive behavior. We follow a character ed program, which we focus on respect, responsibility, and kindness. Pretty much seen in that show.
The bottom-left picture there is, they had a, one of the prizes for their group character ed program. They earned a group prize of a photo?
Dance party with a photo booth.
Dance party. Dance party with a photo booth, that was at Central. So that was most of the crew at one point that afternoon, enjoying that, so.
Can people sign up for SEED mid-year, or is it?
Ongoing all year long. Same with preschool. Open enrollment all year long. Right now, it's a good problem to have, but SEED also has waitlists at every school.
Okay. So you do cap, like, your ratios?
Right, based on the size of the space, based on the size of the space.
Two questions. The days that you have for, open for, like, breaks or snow days, and they're only at Squadron, do kids only register two Squadron, attend those?
No, any of, any SEED kid can register for those.
So it's open to all five elementary schools?
How does, just throw aside, but 26 staff on 379?
They don't all sign up for that. We cap it at 65.
But even on a regular day?
So not every kid is there every day?
Right, that's just how many are registered. Yes, thank you.
Even if you did that?
I wasn't working for you.
Wow, God bless you. I can't do that.
Right. Todd pulls out his calculator, man.
So the industry standard is one adult to 10 children. We typically are about one to seven, one to eight, usually.
So is that an industry standard? Is it our standard? Is it a state?
It's an industry standard. So it's also the State Department, the Office of Early Childhood. If, we do not have to be licensed because we fall under the umbrella of the school system. If we did, it would be a 1 to 10 ratio. I mean, obviously, we follow those regulations, because they're there for a good reason. They're there for kids, so that's what we, we're a little bit better than that ratio, though.
And 379 is K through?
Six, K through six. Yes. And with the exception of Squadron, the kids are all together. So Squadron has the two cafeterias, so we can do a K through 2 and a 3 through 6. But everybody else is kind of all together.
The pictures are great.
The pictures are wonderful.
And do they, they get outside? They can play time outside?
We do get outside, usually at least twice during the afternoon. Twice during the afternoon. That's the first thing we do, is we take them outside or in the gym if the weather's not cooperative. Low off that steam a little bit, run around. They're kids, they need to be kids.
Yep. Yep.
I have a question. So, the seed program is fee-based, though, right?
Correct, it is fee-based, yes.
And with, is it with any assistance, and it depends?
Correct. So, there is tuition. We do provide tuition assistance for those families qualifying for free or reduced lunch.
Okay.
We do provide a break-in tuition, yes, for that.
And in terms of the scope of this program, the finances, this is the largest portion of the Department of Continuing Ed by far, but I do want to stress that, that in terms of what the Board of Ed's commitment to operating budget dollars that go to DCE, it's really only the state-mandated adult division. And the rest of this is completely self-sustained.
Self-sustained.
And really, an important part of what the work that Dave does to make sure that the department, you know, remains vital and yet, you know, maintains a commitment to the finances of it as well.
So, there's no fee for the state-mandated courses?
There's not a fee for the state-mandated courses.
We have to provide that service for free.
Oh, great, great.
Excellent.
I'll end with just saying, anytime you're having a bad day, come to preschool.
Nikki, do you remember when this started out, what enrollment was the first year? Would you remember that?
With seed or with preschool?
Seed. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
It's a funny story, only because I made a bet with Dave. When I was first hired, he wanted me to try to at least get, I want to say, match what the previous Y program had. That was our goal. And if I beat that, it was who bought who lunch. I'm still waiting for my lunch.
You're a seven-course dinner at this.
That's very interesting.
I want to say, he wanted me to get to 90, and we got to 140, if I'm remembering correctly. That was in 2009.
Yep, yeah, great.
So, it's definitely grown. I think the workforce is, is grown, which helps.
Yep, great.
All right.
Thank you so much.
What we wanted to highlight was the diversity of programming, all running through the Department of Continuing Ed, from preschool, summer programming, year-round programming, adult programming, and it's just a, it's a real pleasure to work with this group of professionals. So, thank you for your time tonight and presenting.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. We really appreciate your energy and your commitment to these programs, because it really makes a big difference to our community. So, thank you very much.
Can I thank the board for something? Because I've been, Neil didn't mention this, but this is my 52nd year at Henry James School. I've had at least one of you as a student.
That would be me.
I have to share this with you, because all during those 52 years, I remember our staff and our administrators hoping and trying to get an auditorium for Henry James. And the last battle was with Bob Pelletier many years ago, and it failed through the budget. But, I want to thank you on behalf of all the former staff members of Henry James and the current ones as well, and the administrators, for supporting this. It's, I think it's just wonderful to see this construction going up every day, and it's right off our office. I mean, we can't help but see it every day.
Hear it, and, yeah.
But, thank you. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for saying that.
Will they be staying at Henry James?
That's the current plan, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Moving on, we would like to hear a little bit about our commitment to the Sandy Hook Promise.
That was our comprehensive report for tonight. This will be a little brief, just Sue and I are going to handle this one, but we certainly wanted to talk to you about some programming that has been in place, that is going into place, and that was recently completed in a partnership with an organization known as the Sandy Hook Promise. So, thank you to Kayla for mentioning already that we have been doing some of this programming. The Sandy Hook Promise, obviously, is a nonprofit organization that formed in the wake of the tragedy in Newtown, the group of parents who decided that they didn't, couldn't bear the thought of more violence in the future. So, their, their mission became preventing violence before it happens through education. And that's what the, these are programs about school safety, but I would really call them programs about school climate and school culture, because that's what the Sandy Hook Promise has become about. It's like making sure your school climate is the kind, is the kind of place where kids are going to be respected, that they're going to, they're going to let adults know when things are not right, and that protocols are in place to make sure that we're paying attention to the social-emotional needs of students. So, they've been a great partner. I would say it started in earnest with a visit just over a year ago, or it was, we took a summer visit. Antoinette Belmonte from the middle school, Sue and I took the drive down to Newtown to meet with the executive director in their offices in Newtown, and had a conversation about these four programs that they call the Know the Signs programs. And we were very familiar with one of them at the elementary school that we had already been executing in a few of the elementary schools, but we didn't know much about the other programming. And as I update you here, we'll talk about the, one was just very recently implemented, and one is sort of coming next month. So, the four Know the Signs programs are these. Start with LO, which is elementary-based, and Kayla already gave you a little highlight, I'll say a little more. The Say Something program, which is directed at secondary students, grades seven through 12, and really is about training to make sure that if there are concerns out there, especially through social media, that teenagers are seeing, that adults are never going to see because they're not on those platforms and they're not seeing the things that kids see, that students know when to speak up if they have a concern about a student. And it's not just a concern about violence, it's a concern about somebody who may be hurting, about, you know, a bad social situation for a kid. They want kids to be able to say something. Safety Assessment and Intervention, which is really adults being able to make proper assessments of situations that develop at schools, had an enormous training just at the beginning of last week that Sue will be telling you more about. And then, they also offer a program in suicide prevention education. That's one that we have not implemented yet in Simsbury, but it is an area of focus for us that we hope to partner with them in the future. So, I am really pleased that we're doing this presentation on Start with, in Start with LO Week at Simsbury. So, it's this week in Simsbury. All five elementary schools are participating, as the name suggests, Start with LO. It's all about making connections and inclusivity in the, so each school is doing various programming, and it's really homegrown. They do a little bit different. So, it's everything from certainly morning announcements, sort of challenges during the day, to talk to people that you don't otherwise, usually, they do some like seat switching in the classroom so that you're sitting with new people. They do, at Central School, they've, they've done some chalking out on the playground of messages to go back and forth with people. Wear Your Favorite Shirt Day, so that it's a conversation piece. You can talk about your shirt, I'll talk about my shirt, and we're striking up a conversation. So, each school has found different ways to just get kids connected and talking, and then reinforcing it through all school assemblies and morning meetings at the elementary level. There's a lot of energy to it, the kids love it, and it's really just a, a nice program that the Sandy Hook Promise kind of puts some structure to, but then lets schools take it in their own direction.
Neil, how is it presented to the elementary school kids?
The, why don't you talk about how it was presented to your kids?
Sure. So, it was one of the highs of the Lumpy household this week. It's presented as, under the umbrella of the Shine Program and the Character Ed Program, right? About being kind and respectful, and what does that look like? And what does that look like with members of your school community whom you don't know yet? And when you're out on the playground and you might see someone that's kind of struggling to make a connection, how do you start that conversation and include them in play? So, it's very developmentally appropriate. There's a kind of a spirit of play and games and competition that students respond to. But, again, the focus all around making connections and including people.
Great. We, the one thing with this program that, because we, we don't associate it, we don't talk about it as an association with the Sandy Hook Promise. Like, that just is something we've avoided doing. So, that, that conversation is not out there about what's, what's the Sandy Hook Promise. So, it's just the Start with LO program. Say Something is a program that we have been doing training on recently, and I plan to implement at the high school, starting next month. Again, this is appropriate for middle and high schools. I think that the Sandy Hook Promise recommends grades six through 12, but because of our structure, we're going to, we're going to make sure it's seven through 12. We think that's appropriate. And through some training that they offer, video training really, to recognize the warning signs of threats to self or others, behavior that is of concerns that teenagers are going to see. And I want to emphasize, again, especially in social media. That's where kids are seeing a lot of messages that adults don't see, and it's, and it's important that if something there concerns them, that they, they know the steps to act and say something to a trusted adult. If they don't feel comfortable saying something to an adult in person, there even is an anonymous reporting system component to this through a website, a mobile app, and a call center that they can actually engage, and, and an anonymous tip can be passed to administrators. And if necessary, if it were really something in the moment, crisis danger, even a call to dispatch of the Simsbury Police. So, there, it's a program that entire states have adopted. This is running in the state of Pennsylvania. There's another that I'm not coming up with right now, but that, it's, it's, so we will be introduced, we did the training last week with the adults who would be receiving these tips, and we're planning on the video rollout to students in late October, potentially early November. I'm still working out the dates with Mr. Baker and Mr. Petrina about when kids will see this, but it will be soon. It's going to be in the next few weeks.
Hey, Neil, just before you leave that, no, just thinking about how kids communicate, is there a texting option?
There's, basically, through this app on the phone, turns it into a texting conversation, yes.
They can email, text, or call.
Okay.
And then, based on the email, text, or call, if it happens during the day in the school, it comes back to?
Correct.
Ident, with specific folks, or does it just come back to the administration?
Specific folks, administrators, who we have identified, school resource officers as appropriate. The, if it's a, so the, the way it works is that if there are, what they, there's certain things that they characterize as life safety issues, that's when a smaller group of people, there will be a call to Simsbury Police Dispatch and to administrators to be aware that, you know, something may happen that requires dispatch to go to a house after hours. That's, you know, that's not, not that we would jump into immediate action, but that something was concerning enough. And it's trained people at a call center, you know, recognizing that.
And how to filter those calls and make those determinations, whether it's a life safety event or not.
Just while we're still on the middle school, high school part of this, as kids maybe are worried or concerned about how their friends are behaving, or that there might be somebody who's going to hurt themselves, or something along those lines, those kids who report it and do not do it anonymously, is there a way that you reach, that you reach back to those kids to make sure that the kid who reported it is okay? Because that's a hard thing to do sometimes.
Yeah, I would certainly say, in situations like that, that kind of reporting is typically going to go through a school counselor, a social worker, so, and, and those relationships, we always, the biggest message of that is you did the right thing. You did, you know, always re-emphasizing that you did the right thing. Because kids are, you know, and the training goes through the difference between sort of telling and where.
Being a snitch?
Where.
Right, and helping.
Right.
And there's a distinct difference that they're very clear about in that work with students.
There'll be signs around the schools?
Yeah, there will be. There's, there'll be a letter to parents, and then, you know, the training, and we'll, and then, part of what you're asked to do as a commitment to the program is do, like, refresh your trainings at the start of every year, and make sure that kids remember that this program exists.
When did you say it starts?
We're still working, our, our plan is, we were originally in mid-October, but it's kind of bumped into PSAT day. So, I'm looking probably at a week or two after that, so.
So, that rolls into the next piece, Safety Assessment and Intervention. So, the board may recall that for some years, Special Services has had a goal around mental health, right? And really, looking into those needs and how it relates to the prevention of violence. We, a small group of us, myself, some school psychologists and social workers, really doped deep into looking at the research around best practices. And we found this gentleman, Dr. Dewey Cornell, out of the University of Virginia, and he was at the forefront of this work. Well, Dr. Dewey Cornell has partnered with the Sandy Hook Promise and has developed the first research-based training for building administrators and mental health professionals around seeing the signs of threat, but also, if a threat comes in, how do mental health professionals and administrators work together to ascertain whether the threat is transient in nature, or it has some more substance? And this is all around prevention. So, we had this training, it was pretty exciting, it was a week ago on Monday, September 16th. I want to thank the Simsbury Public Library for allowing us to take up their entire parking lot with cars. But, each of our schools in Simsbury was represented by the building principal, as well as the mental health professionals within those buildings. The Sandy Hook Promise also asks us to reach out to neighborhood districts. So, I'm happy to say that Granby, Canton, Windsor Locks, as well as representatives from the Master School, also participated in this training last week. So, we walked away with feeling more confident in addressing some of these concerns, and we're really looking forward to how this evolves over time with our mental health practitioners and our building administrators. The fourth and final Know the Sign program is around suicide prevention. So, certainly, Simsbury Public Schools has been partnering with our community member, Tom Steen, who's very involved with the Connecticut Association of Suicide Prevention. You know, the availability of providing those, that programming, really, there is that continued need. And you may recall that at our last board meeting, I reported that the Community for Care was actually doing a suicide prevention program. Sandy Hook Promise offer, also offers the opportunity for one within the schools. So, certainly, this is something that I've talked with Tom about, and training for this is to be determined, but it's certainly something that we want to address with our staff, and also for our youth to be able to say, hey, here are some signs that you might see in your friends, and if you do, again, it's about not snitching, but getting in another adult to help you support your friend. So, more to come on that, and I'll certainly report back to the board.
With that component being something that we would be more likely to embed within a health curriculum?
Thank you, yes.
So, but, this is the, this is the one of the Know the Signs programs that, as of now, we haven't dug in as deeply, so.
I'm sorry if you mentioned this, and I missed it, but, so, we go through the four programs. Is there a certification at the end, or something that we receive, or?
No, we haven't talked about that. I mean, these are all, I will say this, one of the things that the Sandy Hook Promise, after the funds were raised, I should have said this at the beginning, these, they offer these programs for free. So, it's, it's about preventing the, the next tragedy. And so, the partnership is really about, you know, they want you committed to it because they're, they're really putting their resources into schools.
Professional development, yeah.
Free, solid professional development.
So, you, so you had mentioned that there's, at the beginning of the year, of the year following, there's like a refresher. So, is that provided through them as well, or is that something then, once you've been through these initial programs, do you take that on yourselves?
So, you take, you would take that on yourself, right? And, and certainly, they are able to help support us in that, if we feel like we need a, more than just a booster?
Yep.
Or some support from their faculty or their members of staff. But, it really is about developing that skill set and being able to take it and sustain it for future, you know, for future investment.
So, not like a one-and-done, we're going to, it's going to be rolling forward with us?
No, that's the whole point. They want to make sure that you have a commitment to continue the work.
That's great.
And then, once you do, like, the elementary schools are multiple years into the Start with LO program now.
That's great.
That, that's now on a pretty good roll.
Good, thank you.
So, when you said we take it on, you mean that it'll be left up to the school to So, when you said we take it on, you mean that it'll be left up to the school to ensure that, say if I was the one that was, went for the first round of training, then it would be up to the school to make sure that I continue it every year?
Or we have the option to say, okay, we would like you to do another full training, or certainly, there is the, the concept of train the trainer, right? So, once you're trained, you can continue to move that along as you see appropriate.
Is there ever any, like, request or need, or do they offer a program that's also tailored to parents, like how to recognize it in your kid's friends, or if your kid comes to you, how should you react, or what should you say?
Jen, I think that, that they haven't developed a specific program, but that is a, a great point that you're making, and we offer kind of a lot of parent programming, training in, in the evenings, and maybe that's something that we certainly should be mindful of and take a look at. That's a great suggestion.
Were the SROs part of the safety?
Yes, thank you. I can't believe I missed that part. Yes, they were.
You may have said, maybe I missed it, right?
No, I, I did not say, our two SROs and our Director of Security, Mark Ritz, was also at that training.
Great, great.
Kayla, do you have anything to say? You want to share?
No.
You already mentioned, you already mentioned it, say, hi, say hello.
Yes.
I think this is great. I think this is a really good idea.